Hello, you guys. We are meeting behind this rather important meeting. It's kind of semi informal really, so for you guys, you know, we're not going to be too formal about anything, but we'll just go on and then we don't have to talk at the end, so. So, if you want to start off by, if you got anything, I will give you an introduction. Let's see, that's back there, if you please. May God's purpose lead you through your day and may His counsel guide you in every situation. May His wonderful love bless you wherever it may lead us. As we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. And to everybody who works in this city, one nation under God, in this world, with unity and justice.
Okay, community committee. I think we have a few pieces of paper that you filled out. If anybody else wants to speak, they'll have to fill out the paper in the back and I'm up here. Since there's only two, we'll just start off with Jacob.
From our library, Village Library, yes. Hello, everyone. My name is Jacob Burson and I am the Assistant Laboratory Manager of Village Library, Central Streets. I just wanted to have a few questions, a quick update, what's going on in the library? The big thing is that our summer reading program is kicking off, just like those here, June 1st. We're having a big summer reading kickoff with five classes in the library. So, I'm hoping they can see that. It's been pretty fun, it looks forward to it. And if you have a cool thing, this year, we're working with IHOP, we signed up for summer reading. We have a coupon for a pretty short set of handbags, so. And that's on top of all other presents, like bags and books and emails, so. Please come on down, see us, sign up for that. The other thing is, we have a new item you can check out in the library called the Scare for You Back Home. They're full of really cool activities to do over the summer. Things like seed dispersal, or vulture patterns, animal tracks, things like that. Check them out, take them home, do some collectives for your kids, or some nice fun stuff. So, that's about it, but please come and see us, we're just up the street, always love to see you.
Thank you.
Julie, would you like to come up?
Sure. I don't have a lot of, I don't have three minutes of comments, but I was going to ask the zoning committee to perform a study to prevent people from operating a commercial business on a property, which would include all businesses and, but wouldn't be limited to just commercial farming. I think this impacts our community, it can be an eyesore. And it's confusing to people, you know, wondering what's the village, are there any rules? Are there any regulations of different things? So, I'd really like the zoning committee to look into this. Questions?
I'm sorry, you said, "commercial"?
Commercial business.
Any kind of business?
A commercial business, yeah.
Okay. Have you got anything to say when we move on, as we think, comment on us?
Just, "commercial business", you can have a business in the home as long as the home is a primary use of the structure.
Is that kind of where it should look?
I'm sorry, did I hear you?
You can have a business in the home as long as the business is a primary use of the structure.
So, you can, can you have a business in your front yard? I think that's, that's really where I'm going.
I guess you'd have to define business, yeah, we'd have to look into that.
Okay, so can I expect, like, a follow-up?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Give us, give us a couple of reasons.
Okay.
Okay, well, on the agenda, go through, any council member have a request? Or any of these items that need approval, minutes, volumes, proclamations, that need to approve. Last names? I have one question, I'm trying to ask you, I don't know if you have that. Okay, let's move on to the administration. I'm sorry, we're blocking these proclamations.
The motion, set off, set again.
Go ahead, motion.
Oh, my, I'm sorry.
Sorry for sharing. We're all set, and that is Sean. Yay, Sean.
Yay.
Bubba?
Yay.
Yay.
Motion passed, four to zero.
Okay, let me follow my proclamation. We've got to, we've got to proclaim, so I don't know.
We'll do those up there, I'd say, sir.
Okay. The proclamation, okay. Let's do the administration of the, oh, 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 office, open office, where I really like to work for, for five councilmen. Would you gentlemen, if you could, uh? I guess we'll perform the, oh?
Any family members want to take pictures, please, come through and locate where you'd like to do this.
All right, raise your hand, please. I state your name and feet up, please.
I, John Allen.
You solemnly swear.
You solemnly swear.
That I will, that I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States of America.
And the law of the State of Oklahoma.
And the laws of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
That I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance or nonperformance of any act or duty.
For the performance or nonperformance of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation of that, I'll.
Other than the compensation of that, I'll.
I proudly swear.
Proudly swear.
And I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Duties of my office.
And the duties of my office.
While serving as City Council Member of the City of Oklahoma.
While serving as City Council Member.
The City of Oklahoma.
Brad, could you do a little bit of this? Listen, you're saying, I really did just want to see, like, Sean and Sunny get to the bottom of it. It's like, to see them ready to go back.
Sean and Sunny just come over. You guys are very nice to each other during the meetings, why are you being so negative? You want to stand over this side or no?
We should stand over here.
Okay, we're in front of the TV.
We should, we should look at everybody.
Okay.
These guys have been on the council for a long while, we've really got like twenty-five years.
A long time now.
He had hair back then.
Sean, we just let you stick around, that's why I like your clothes.
We like your wife.
I didn't, too.
Well, we'll stand to you guys go, we've got two young energetic members now, and, yes. But we'd like to, I'm reading this proclamation, it's very long and, and, pretty meaningful, I guess it's a little true. Now, let's just see what it says here, since I'm reading it from the second line. Sean Cummings, he was elected to the City Council as Ward One Councilmember April 5th, 2022. So, he's a member, he's got, whereas Councilmember Cummings took the oath of office to serve residents for five-four in the City of Oklahoma until May 2nd, 2022. Councilmember Cummings performed his duties with both passion and compassion, and yes, you did, for the residents and businesses and work for. While providing the same levels of commitment citywide, and whereas, Councilmember Cummings shared a voice in the village with other local government leaders, and he did share his voice with our people. With active participation and representation in the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments and the Northwest Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, and Councilmember Cummings dedicated and committed extensive time and energy for the City of the Village, advocating for the future success of our community, and whereas, he also proudly served the community as Vice Mayor while focusing on equity and fair treatment, reducing disparity, and providing quality service to all members of the community. In recognition of Councilmember Sean Cummings' service with the City of the Village, I, Mayor of those sins, do hereby proclaim May 20th as Councilmember Sean Cummings Day.
Just five more hours. Our day is five hours.
Sunny, this has been going on a long time. Sunny, this is our proclamation. Sunny Cummings was elected to the City Council as Ward One Councilmember on April 7th, 2015. And whereas, Councilmember Cummings took the oath of office to serve residents of Ward, what was your word?
Detail.
And he said it in the village on May 4th, 2015, and whereas, Councilmember Cummings performed his duties with both passion and compassion for the residents and for the citizens of Ward, five-four. Interchangeable, while providing the same levels of commitment to citywide. And whereas, Councilmember Cummings shared a voice in the village with other local government leaders, and actively participated in representations in the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments, Chamber of Commerce, and also Oklahoma Municipal League. And whereas, Councilmember Cummings dedicated and committed extensive time and energy for the City of the Village, advocating for the future success of our community, and whereas, he also proudly served the community as Vice Mayor while focusing on equity and fair treatment, reducing disparity, and providing quality services to all members of the community. And therefore, in recognition of Councilmembers Sunny Cummings' service to the City of the Village, I, both sins, as Mayor, do hereby proclaim May 20th, 2024, as Councilmember Sunny Cummings Day.
Thank you, Chair. Do you want to send another presentation from the fire department?
No.
We didn't, we asked you to.
So, this is a small token of our appreciation for your dedication and service to our community. Just, you know, read a little bit of this, dedication to public safety has been evident in your actions, making the village a safer place for us and for the citizens. We want to thank you guys, and this is from our department, so.
Thank you.
You got it?
Thank you so much.
You guys, you had, you had to stay here for a second.
I don't believe we're part of you. I think we're going to go to this favorite store with the appropriate order, Sunday. That'll take off the door. I got my signature back, so. All right, so we, we're, we're, we're pretty, they're pretty, thank you.
Let's go to consideration, election of mayor, mayor, sort of the way you're talking. We have put out a debate then, to be mayor for this time. He's not here, but, probably he's not here, so he's not going to be, so. So, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll approve. I'm not that good.
No, it's, yay. Braxton?
Yay.
Bubba?
Yay.
Sean?
Yay.
Motion passed, four to zero.
We also have consideration of elections of the Vice Mayor to serve or win your term. Do you think they, they're over for him, you know, him, run this all up here? We have gotten a hit, and we have asked the Moore to join us as Vice Mayor. Did you accept that decision?
I do.
Okay, do I have a, do I have a motion?
I'm not sure.
Second?
Second.
Braxton, second by John. Melanie?
Yay.
Braxton?
Yay.
Bubba?
Yay.
Sean?
Motion passed.
Special elections. Would you like to take?
Yes, I would, you too.
Would you like to take a, a, a beer, sir?
No.
No, thanks for the work, but you better be ready to pay my hundred bucks.
Bubba's going to give you all a hundred bucks. All right. So, it is, the business, we ought to have, yeah, eight, sorry? Oh, okay, we're not, we're not, you know. Oh, nine, yes. Oh, okay, yours is different? I have, as consideration of accepting a letter of resignation from Planning and Zoning Commission from John Howe? Yeah, okay.
Our mayor, John Howe, is very, he's a representation of planning and zoning, since we're already planning a big concern on political I think this were his efforts and opportunity was focused on his role as Councilman. Appreciate anything rejected, still efficient.
So, you're going to make a motion to accept one?
I make a motion to accept.
I'll say it.
Thank you.
Braxton?
Yay.
Bubba?
Yay.
Melanie? Yay.
John?
Yay.
I intend, consideration of radio system agreement with the City of Oklahoma City for the Public Safety and Emergency Communication Services.
Yes, ma'am, I understand people know a lot more about the subject than myself, this is what we go on it. Deputy Chief Chris, pretty good, Deputy Chief Dan Reeves, Deputy Chief Russ Landon, Deputy Chief Matt Butcher, but I think there's one Chris. So, what, we want that is, partner with Oklahoma City for some of our radio systems.
Yes, we currently use Oakwind, which is a free radio system. We're looking to improve our operability and interoperability with utilizing Oklahoma City's radio system. It's a much better network, and it'll improve our interoperability with the communities around us. And with us, the fire department, we're going to be going to automatic aid with Oklahoma City Fire Department, and that will seamlessly tie our communications together. So, I know it's a big change, switching communication networks, but this system is a, it'll be a great benefit to us in the future. So, any questions at all?
How long will that take to implement?
It's, it's going to take some time, we're going to make sure that there are no bugs in the system. Won't be signing the agreement next month, we're using their radio system. We're going to make sure that all the bugs, we, we're getting a grant, the fire department is, so we're going to have to order the radios, get those programmed. The police department is going to have to get their radios, get them programmed, and then we're going to have to start doing tests and make sure that our communication is one hundred percent ready to go before we switch our systems. We're still going to have the utilization of Oakwind as a backup radio system. So, we're not using that, we're only increasing our operability.
The fire department's eligible for county, it leaves, park, and find that to have their radios first. The Oklahoma City, we get the radios from police department, and then we're going to get two to three radios a year to replace what we have.
So, that's, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, I was going to say, it doesn't work, but is this something that we necessarily, my comments is considered?
Yes, the agreement requires a police and council to ensure that the mayor, vice mayor, and the city attorney.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, I was just going to, so the grant is covering the, the cost of the majority of the radios?
The radio hardware for the fire department, and we'll have a maintenance, a maintenance agreement, but if we were to rate it right, it's current, they rent out, we'd be ready to repair. The box, we'll ship it back, about five hundred dollars, takes about two weeks. I mean, this is very nice, because most new radios throughout Oklahoma City, they have higher volume frequencies, we can save on the long-term, on the devices. And if we do have, if radio needs repair, it's broken, we can take it to their shop, get one or two repaired, and have it just repaired that way. But we're not cutting ones with great, we have cables, some just balls on all the trucks, and it's getting to emergency, but we're going to, where is there?
Any more questions?
So, I know we, sorry, so I know we kind of assist Oklahoma City and assist us and, and all this stuff. Will this make that easier?
It will, right now, we have mutual aid with Oklahoma City. We make contact with automatic aid with Oklahoma City. So, anytime we have a structured fire, anytime they have a structured fire, then the boundaries, that they automatically respond, just like Nickel Hills does. So, we don't have to request, so it'll just be automated. And with the system, it'll just make communication just really easy. There'll be no patches and things like that, we'll be able to communicate instantly.
Right.
Yeah, any questions for me? We're, we're happy to contribute. Chris has done a great job kind of spearheading this whole project. The Oakwind, OKWIM, is a state radio system that kind of starts down in Lawton, all the way up to Tulsa. It was really developed through Highway Patrol and other state agency. Probably ten or fifteen towers throughout that network. Here in Oklahoma City alone, there's probably at least that many, thirteen, fifteen towers. And so, we're hopeful that the, and expect that the communication will be clearer, faster. So, we're, we're eager to continue to explore that and hopefully get an improvement.
I will ask one quick question. Is this the system that was implemented into that issue, that accident that occurred between the Highway Patrol and the Oklahoma City?
Yeah, yeah, they were able to communicate with each other, and they were sitting right with each other, and it lost.
So, this is.
It lost communication. Lost agreements, yeah.
Thank you for that information.
Any more question? You just received an appointment recently, what was that? Yeah, the governor appointed me to the OSBI Commission as a commissioner. Still have to get consent approval, and hopefully that'll happen this week, and I'll join the commission in several years, so. I'm going to tell you, I knew that. This gentleman has been around for a long time, he's, he's just so accepted in the village, with all of us, and by the way. If you don't know, I'm in the know. Hopefully not through the radio system. You know what, we can visit back. But congratulations, and it's quite an honor to do, uh, some of our citizens.
And if we can, go ahead and make a motion, or a concern?
Consider. I'll vote for the two considered.
The various.
I'm going to do the first, oh, I thought it was just consideration, I'll vote for the consideration.
I'll say it.
John, second by Braxton, call roll Braxton.
Yay.
Bubba?
Yay.
Melanie?
Yay.
John?
Yay.
Motion passed, four to zero.
I believe we're on the ground, I think, regarding the agenda. Consideration of Resolution 5-20-2024 regarding the building design review of the Stanley Heaven Building, located at 1508 Northwest 106 Street.
This came to plan in terms of last Monday, they made a recommendation to approve. I'll show you on screen, excuse our, over there. Excuse the overview of the Stanley Heaven Building, the building was a rectangle around it. The red rectangle is a building that wanted to remove and demolish that, and they want to build a new building. It will be, they'll issue a 24 by 50 inch building, 50 foot building, and structure needs 36 by 64 classroom. It will actually have two classrooms in it. We'll have a brick facade around the edge of it to meet the lizard. Uh, will have a brick facade around the end of it, underneath the sun requirements. With a window, metal top, and with the roof, and have two classrooms in it. Two separate classrooms, and, uh, it's getting to the preview on Monday, and they made a recommendation of purpose, so they did have some discussion on the exterior design. We're satisfied, which is one of the strengths that it would be, as well as where it's located. Uh, now I'm actually developing a little area around it, training, so it's kind of, uh, not a, uh, even. We've done physical metal buildings, it won't be, it will tie in well with the rest of the areas.
All right.
You got anything, Ken?
We, we got a lot of some Ken also that goes into, I think the council's red, so Ken, was it anything fine? Would you be able to make any adjustments with the?
Yeah, there are several, some didn't have a brick facade around it. Buildings like that, that were a fifty percent facade, they experienced a nice agree, uh, they came out with a second for injury, which satisfied that. There was also a, uh, question as far as the fire separation between the building to the south. Uh, working around that, two hour firewall on the south side of that building, which will separate that to the fire protection. The building is also gonna be, uh, monitored to the inside of the building, so, uh, we have to watch it a little.
Who's, who's the general contractor?
That's, uh, South Forest, I'm sure.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Can we have a motion? For this?
I'll make a motion, I'll say that. I'll say it.
Motion to do that, Braxton, second by Bella, of Royal Braxton.
Yay.
Melody?
Yay.
Bella?
Yay.
John?
Yay.
Um, number thirteen, consideration. Um, did we just do twelve? Oh, no. Okay, number twelve, consideration of resolution five twenty, twenty twenty four E regarding the sign permit request for from our Lord Lutheran Church located at twenty-nine hundred West Caphan Row. For a level one electronic message display sign.
The last time we dealt with property in the church, it took about either dissolve, or should just. I will bring this even night because of, uh, level one electronic message display signs that are in A one, uh, civil family residential. The approval authority is the council, so now that Ken tells you more about this, you have a package front, you, this is not, this is your package, what your plans, what you're gonna do. They currently have a, uh, marking sign that they change to magnetic representation.
So, in chapter twenty, there's our sign, kind of, uh, E M D signs, like, turn up messaging display signs, level ones and twos are allowed in, uh, A one civil family residential. They are accepted to council approval. Uh, I think, uh, there's little threes and fours, which have scrolling text and graphics. Four, basically watching the movie, they're outlawed in, uh, civil family residential. So, I've already been playing with you as far as the size, the shape, the setbacks, everything's good there, it just requires simple approval. Uh, the closest residential house is two hundred and sixty feet, and the code requires at least a hundred feet for our association.
We, we, we did these codes, which are, okay.
I mentioned there was a further difference in distraction from the traveling, you know, down this, uh, and I guess why we made it to level one and two. Yeah, so the level one is basically a, uh, image shows up and it blocks out, gives it the next one. Level two is, uh, image shows up and it fades again and remains out. Uh, like I said, three is scrolling, which will go for shackle driver, so that's, uh, outlawed. And four is like watching TV, you know, that, so, so, level one areas, those are, uh, out.
And I know, I know the, the first Baptist church has a, has a little love of sign, except every time I go live, it says we love Oklahoma City. Would you ask, uh? Would you ask this church if they would put you love up? And maybe somewhere the Baptist will catch on if there is no.
One of the things that do decide for this is the ambient light, basically of, uh, the, you know, the glory lights at night. And so, pretty much it's standard inside, and we, that's already into the sign. It used to be they had a program, provide a shade, that's pretty much just.
Kind of standardized?
Yeah, yeah, it used to be, you know, two o'clock in the morning, we told them, I was like, it's kind of about that.
Under the hand.
So, go ahead, John, you go first. Uh, it looks like it's about nine feet, if I was to ask if that correct.
Right. We can play this later.
How, how does that compare to the sign that's there currently?
Uh, the, it's probably, if you look on the very back of the render, uh, you can work it first. Your sign, it's yellow age, it'd probably be a little bit taller than that.
Okay.
Uh, the sign height is a certain proportion to the adjacent street speed. Uh, Caphan Row is thirty-five, which allows for fifty with, uh, height to sign actually.
It looks like a regular narrow entry.
Yeah, it'll, it'll have a smaller footprint, that's there. I think the Luther Church came a couple of years ago, and he looked at replacing what they had with, uh, pretty good sized sign at that time. There, it didn't, four, so they're not controlling the one, kind of, so, still have, uh, smaller footprint, and it would be a much.
Um, did I have a break in there somewhere that the sign must have gone off at nine? Like that from, that was a certain hour, especially since it's a residential.
Usually.
Thought I read that, but.
Usually it's, it's, in fact, that ambient lighting, the moonlight, the glow of the sign, uh, there are some signs that are programmed. They can program to that high bottom, uh, usually, you know, in a lot of this way, in four and five, it can, it's all, but all of them require something happened.
Okay, and so this is a way a sign that actually has images, is a kind of a sign, sign of the ass.
Uh, heard you, yes.
Third, third, twenty dash fifty-three, is one, your last sentence right here, allows the city council to determine the hours in which a previous level one may be operating, or may require. Can make this a sign necessary to reduce the elimination of nearby residences, but can you cover that, what's, what they're gonna be doing, the, you know, like?
Yeah, like I said, the closest, that part of the effort, the closest resident is two hundred and sixty feet, it's kind of along the south east corner of, uh, the, uh, term. Uh, like I said, it's a condition, what they, the couch can't limit it, uh, there's not, there's a lot of residential.
Currently, there's a spotlight shining on it, so there's probably not that much for, for.
Definitely, except for, it's.
So, if you turn on the first time tested, it looks.
If it's, uh, national, it's, it's, I guess we'll have a, a discussion.
Well, um.
We usually find our churches, or, or, yeah.
So, do we have a motion for the sign?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution, zero five dash one dash.
Second, sir.
On the roof. Motion by John, second by Bella, of Royal Braxton.
Yay.
Bella?
Yeah.
Melody?
Yay.
John?
Yay.
Motion passes four to zero.
Number, that makes dialogue, I'm a third, in consideration of resolution five dash twenty twenty four dash twenty, dash twenty twenty four regarding, uh, C. Regarding the review, acceptance and approval of the updated stormwater management plan.
I know Bruce has gone about eighteen months, but I, I really love stormwater management, and I just seem afraid of it, too. We do a stormwater management plan, and we're gonna have it updated. Uh, TerraCon was our consultant engineer on that project, being Q S B U B. Uh, we have a draft, so to meet compliance with the Department of Environmental Quality, we should approve resolution zero five twenty dash twenty twenty four. And I could pull up the stormwater management plan as well, if anyone wants to leave and go on the vapor, just, if it was on our website, we'll let them read it.
I'll make a motion to approve. I'll say it.
Motion by Bella, second by John, Braxton?
Yay.
Melody?
Yay.
Bella?
Okay.
John? Motion passes four to zero.
Number fourteen, uh, consideration of resolution five dash twenty dash twenty twenty four D regarding the lease purchase of a heavy duty service truck for the Public Works Department.
Public Works Department wants a one-ton truck, with a dump, and honestly, they can work hard and get more things done. Current account is, what year model?
Uh, two thousand eight.
Two thousand eight, our rent costs are getting a little higher than what the, uh, new lease payment will be, so it's going to be worth two thousand, that's twenty twenty four. Ford F three fifty, one ton, uh, there's a uplift, uh, which is a dump bed, you know, we're getting at this, we had our capital improvements plan. And I had to run it down real quick for me on the lease. And I can't find it, so the total's leasing, only through seventy thousand, twenty, thirty, four dollars. And our first payment will be in November. Ken, you know what our amount of income is up to?
About, and then the process goes through the state.
Yes, this is state bid, and we have the pending renovation scheduled. Sorry.
I wonder.
There's just a few pieces of paper, so.
Of course.
And that's at least, uh, this is a lease purchase of our style bank on state bid with.
Are they keeping them on with the?
We will.
They're a product of so.
Yes, they'll try to, but, uh, so it'll be seventeen thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents for principal and interest for.
You said that the, like, the current, uh, repair fees were.
Oh, it's, 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 it's not, that's, I'm not expecting to see this.
Okay, man?
If you beat that, it's a budget in the capital plan, or this will follow with the next year's capital plan, uh, depending on how we do it.
So, we did, we do currently have a budget out.
Yes.
And so, do you have a motion to, uh, put this, this purchase?
I'll make a motion to.
Thank you.
I'll say it.
Motion by gentlemen, second by Bella, of Royal Braxton.
Yay.
Bella?
Yay.
Melody?
Yay.
John?
Yay.
Motion passes four to zero.
Number fifteen, consideration of the resolution five dash twenty dash twenty twenty four E declaring that ninety percent of the budgeted revenues have been received.
The slide that there is, a recent slideshow, let me try that.
I'll ask, um, Melody, is this a year's, is it June?
Yes. So, my person, I'm this year. Okay, so resolution five twenty twenty four indicates we have received ninety percent of our budgeted revenues. Uh, which should hit this goal when it goes the end of the May. Currently, the end of April, we're ninety-eight point two five percent of budgeted revenues. Uh, for budget act, it's up to ninety thousand, we can not spend our main ten percent, take half of ninety percent of revenue.
And so, that's what this does.
Declare we receive ninety percent of our, the general fund, this is.
Do you have a motion to approve? Or to, yes, that declare this declaration.
I'll make a motion to. I'll make a comparison to the, I'll say.
Motion by Braxton, second by Bella, of Royal Braxton.
Yay.
Chuck, Bella?
Yay.
Melody?
Yay.
John?
Yay.
Motion passes four to zero.
If y'all, if y'all hear what Bella says, I'll, I'll, you all hear, so. So, consideration of the resolution, uh, five dash twenty dash twenty twenty four F regarding bid award for mowing landscaping and maintenance of city-owned property.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we put out a bid packet for mowing, uh, landscaping and maintenance. We put it in groups with parks, Pacific Plaza, Green Channels and Driveaway, we received full bids on it. Uh, we are recommending native environment LLC, uh, they were both in low bid, uh, they're about two miles down the road. They seem very excited about working here, and I know that this text is kind of small here, uh, clear. It's not in the rest of the show. For ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight dollars, we're working around our, what was our current one? Seventy. Pacific Plaza and the landscaping, uh, the city terms, we have the contract for you, we put the full bid specs into that. But we're decided the work will begin on July first, and go through December thirty-third, and then for auction, we're going to citizens lead for a four-year period.
You know, I'm just looking at the, all the improvements of the Pacific area, I don't think there's that much, uh, catch of grass, I don't really see much of that, but I was always worried about.
Mowing isn't as bad as the edging of the tree, the leading, it's more.
Size.
And, 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 so, we got, so we got a terrible five bids, vendors, uh, also metro, but our recommendation is for negative environment, and so, those are also.
This, this quote is four, four years.
This is one.
Or this is one.
So, how much is it?
Uh, we had a maximum, asked for a maximum contract, that Chris requests, but ten percent, but that is just what most they can ask for. We will renegotiate pricing, uh, if there's, it's not fine under this code, but definitely, we have a, marketing, our market changes, the costs are down, that's something we will benefit from that. But it's often improved, what their cost increases on, so they're not, not that renewable, and it will be renegotiated, brought back to you for.
And that's every?
That'll be every, any of those.
Is that ten percent max to the forty years, or ten percent per year?
It was ten percent per year, but then one is zero percent, and the others were ten percent, and one had one for fifteen percent.
Negotiate your, your plus city get, make a contract.
Correctance. So, it's, it's an option to be, is what it is, and if it does not work out for them or for us, we're in December, but if it don't, then January, we're gonna met somebody. Our current contractors will go through, we did in June, and they, they go on with the contract, but they do not in Pacific Plaza, would be taken then, wait now.
Until.
Until the contracts are, at this case, it's on the Jews of, uh, with most cities, it outsourced, so we're gonna take a new motion, do it, and redo in the year, because you're better.
Most times, it's.
And they'll be available this week, can, can I order, you know, three, three bags.
So, that, that will like replacing, like, should I add to the plans then?
That will, I mean, like, including, uh, springtime mulch, I had Dr. Park in the Pacific Plaza, uh, not so much as replacement, if they would do that, some, maybe, on some of the vegetables, we'll plant out here. I think it's a one tree, knocked, knocked off, we're not, that's gonna recover. If we had to add shrubs upon trees, that would be a separate cause.
So, we have.
Sorry, we, we control scheduling on this, if we, which we bitted out for a weekly, uh, bi-weekly, uh, drive. It, it's a very dry summer, not gonna be up here in Kansas, because we have the charts. But we estimate we're gonna get twenty weeks.
So, on the contract listing, it's a pay thy service, no rand, there's dough, or, uh, is there a base amount that they get in contract, or is it, is it?
Pay thy service, I'm not really sure what they do, so if we have, uh, some reason Johnson Park doesn't need that, that will, that's not, is that?
My question would be, don't negotiate it, talk everybody, and you're totally aware of it, and that's, that's a really good thing.
We had, we had four qualified good vendors with that.
Good.
Can I have a motion?
Make a motion to the group.
I'll say it.
Motion by Braxton, second by Braxton, yay. Melody? I'm sorry, Bella?
Kay.
Melody?
Yay.
John?
Yay.
Motion passes four to zero.
Now, we have our important.
It's, uh, treasurer is not here this evening, and she had a private commitment, after we rescheduled seven months, she had a blood, a chart, and stuff, or something else. Love something, I can see this, uh, total revenues on the year is fifteen million, six hundred. Blood sample, I can see this, uh, total revenues on the year is fifteen million, six hundred and seventy thousand in the general fund. Our expenses are eleven million, seven hundred and fifty-five thousand, so we have revenues over expenditures, which is generally a good thing. A little development, uh, going on to our, uh, fund balance, uh, it's a four point eight million in the general fund, uh, and increase of three hundred and ninety-three thousand for a month. Uh, capital improvement, uh, is a five hundred and thirty-three thousand, hundred thousand, uh, change in accounts is five hundred and seventeen thousand. We've got some capital improvement plans approved, uh, got some interest on emergency reserve, goes back a little bit of dollars. And village public works authority will try and get that spent down, and get the Draper Park completed, and the Pacific Plaza completed, and all that making more of that. Signature report, and, uh, we're looking to go into a new report prior to June, August. It will be more of the current year, the budget, year-to-date, and not so much just on the, you see, that's comparisons and. For this, uh, you mentioned our, our, our. Sales capture report, you have a copy in front of you, because someone could not upload the corrected copy. Agenda for this meeting, uh, so we've got many sales taxes, five-year, fifty thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars. Uh, we're currently at seven two eight one, thirty-seven, uh, which is, we've already surpassed last year's federal election, I still want to choose a correct. Next page here is your total taxes, with sales tax, used tax, cigarette tax, tobacco tax, and gas exhaust tax. We're becoming five million, we surpassed last year's eight hundred million. Uh, your sales tax collection by NIF category, pretty color spreadsheet that I was trying to make, I could get access to all the data. We're looking pretty steady across the board, as we're narrowing down the budget, but we'll have the excess of revenue to carry over, and it should pay for new proof from the library. Uh, we're expecting currently, what we're looking at, uh, the increase in revenue, projected revenues, will be a lovely increase in expenditures projected. So, we're looking good moving forward. City manager should call it, and it's something I've been looking at here. Budget, I'm neck deep in the above to eyebrows, and while we're having down, we have a draft budget before we hit the month. We're closing on general obligation bonds tomorrow, which just means the money required to us, so once we get that number in, let's call the fee to bond council, not in sitting, attorney general should be here and everything, we'll have that number, uh, for the public, for the public works authorities. We can start walking, rolling on the phase two of our streets, our sidewalks, phase one, phase two, our drainage, phase one, phase two, and phase three of the parts. And we'll have some information coming out on social media on that show, could be what we're doing, and when we start this, we'll track it for communications. Law will be working on the parts, uh, one of us, we use co-engineering on the streets, sidewalks, drainage, the larger firm, DWR, we use, provide us a little better service, and we're helping the administrative side and the project management side of the order. We're making an appointment in Public Works, as Larry Wolf is retiring here, the chief affiliate. Second day, we're going to kind of please leader revert to Public Works director, keep Larry on as an consultant and advisor. Kevin's been working as assistant director for the past two, two and a half years, let's give Larry a chance to transition towards retirement, and let Kevin operate, and Larry's still, still there to get assistance needed. Mayor, those good things about Chief Landon. Uh, we hosted the Northwest Oklahoma Chamber Commerce Coffee Connection at the City Plaza. Uh, we're ribbon cutting, but we're in May, it's ready sixteen, please check out our Facebook page, C E C Engineering, we did the electric work, the robot, so, very exciting, video covering that. We're working a sewer issue down on West Chester, in the southwest corner of town, it is National Residency Home City. It is a private sewer line that ties into the main, there are two homes on it, one of the homes, we did their driveway approach a couple of years ago, but the sewer line is about nine inches deep. So we had someone in progress here to resolve, we've been in contact, working with Oklahoma City, being the Q on that, so I think we, we had a big news, the project, we were following that story, all facts on it, uh, but we're trying to get that resolved. Looking at meetings for the month of June, uh, we will need to have a budget hearing, the later, June fifteenth. Budget meeting, the later, Sunday, uh, I'm sorry, uh, fourteenth is the Friday. General, the budget hearing, steps toward requirement for the public comment on the budget. Brother, you're going out of town, I'm not exactly sure when David Vennan is coming back. I'm going to be gone the first week of June, National Guard, Fort Sill, or the back of Mustang the next week, so I can, um, if. We just need to look at is, when is the best time to set the meeting for the hearing? We want to have a separate meeting for the budget, we'll have to probably get back to vacation, or we're here to seventeenth with work. Busy Wednesday night, I think, right?
Hopefully this meeting.
Oh, okay. Okay, well, wait until he gets back and pull you all next week, and see when we can do that, but prefer to have a budget hearing, probably, he said he would want the, well, twelve? Okay, so we might try to look at doing that on the tenth, it'll be a month, so. You're out of the place here? Okay. Make sure David gets back, and I'm going to pull up, you'll see, in our next meeting.
All right.
Park affairs report, no, I'll get this faster.
No.
And if you were going to Draper Park, it didn't start to come together, um, we were hoping to be finished by the end of May, uh, might be able to get in June, get some of that stuff done on. A lot has been great, so we have a few grading issues on the contract, we're making the contract, we're very good. Little play area, you can kind of see it now here, in this picture, the bottom, my bottom left. Uh, you have three separate play areas, where they're age groups, plus the slabs, and we've got handful of kids, very many, so they're very, they have a good time. Couldn't picture your awareness, and maybe things be corrected, law has a little board on it. Just give you the department reports.
So let's, on that, I'm definitely, my brother, this flash pack, it opened?
Yes, this flash pack, we have it before they're finished.
Yes.
Yes, flash pack will open.
It will open on the twenty-fourth, I would say. Uh, the park itself shouldn't be ready, the consciousness won't be done, and it will probably be sold, it's like.
But this flash, but it does fail.
It's a little bit of a war.
I think that's.
This park, I don't know, what for you to do, chief, making an update, you want to bring our attention?
Uh, no, a lot of numbers, uh, we just, uh, graduated our citizens police academy. Uh, had a great group of citizens that live and work in the village, spent the last couple of months at the police department every, uh, Thursday evening for a couple of hours. Uh, we had a couple of dozen of our police officers teach a variety of subjects, from crime scene processing to DUI enforcement communications. Uh, we have scenarios where we put pistols and pepper spray in the hands of our students, and allow them to solve problems, traffic stops and domestic situations. It was a blast, we enjoyed getting to know them. Uh, I always tell people that it's critical that we need the citizens to help us determine what our priorities are, and that's just one of our top community policing, uh, outreachers. So, great group of people, had a lot of fun with them, we'll have another citizens police academy in September. So, I invite all the council, anybody that has an interest in what our police department does, some videos of them processing crime scenes, crash investigations. Just got to show all of our people what we do, why we do it, how we're trained, um, we just really enjoyed that, so. Other than that, we're just running a hundred miles an hour.
Chief, if you could just, you might let everybody know, the process it takes when we hire people on the service, it's quite a bit of training, it takes a lot of months to get to it, not put them on the street, you might just comment on that.
Okay, yeah, it's probably common when someone leaves a job, they think it's normal to give a two-week notice, three-week notice. It actually takes us eight to ten or eleven months from the time we advertise a job opening with the police department, to have the physical testing, the written testing. We have several interviews with different people, our background investigations, very extensive, includes polygraph examination, mental health examination, credit report. Uh, we're talking to neighbors, wives, ex-wives, teachers, landlords, and, uh, so we finally fit people that we believe will be a good fit through the police department. Uh, and then they've got to get through a four-month police academy. And then when they come to us from the police academy, we have another at least four months of training with the variety of our officers on all different shifts, uh, just to make sure that they have what it takes to, to serve here.
So it takes a while. It's eight months before they hit, they'll hit the street in their, in their training with the officer, you know, that you have on the second phase, but, you know, I was reading through that the other day, and I'm going, it's hard for me to visualize, but eight, you think that's, it's a long time, but you got somebody that is going to make a difference.
Right.
You don't hire somebody in two weeks to go out on the street.
Oh, my gosh, the liability to put them in a police car with the village on the side, wearing our police uniform, we take that very seriously, so.
And even though we're small, you know, we're, we're a smaller city than our surrounding cities, we, we do the very same things that they do, except that we have to be a little bit better, because we are small. You know, we have to keep up our standards, we have to offer enough, you know, financial help, bring officers in, because we're always looking for that. And so, we're, we're, we're pretty set, so it's always, I think, we're the police department, you know, on that kind of the, we don't have to talk about the people, you know, you know, religious, not the way we want it, so. Very fortunate to have leadership, city of Iowa here, if you guys haven't been, please do, these cats are unbelievable. They put out fires. And then they do a whole bunch of community stuff, that a lot of people recognize, but the party makers are going to start putting things out for us, on, on what our police department, student community, so we appreciate it. And this is the first time I've heard.
Me?
Yeah, the party maker. The representative, we'd like to ask, usually, yeah, no, it's, yeah, some of the things we do, so, we appreciate it.
Thank you for the information.
Sure.
And, uh, can I get a transcript?
Yeah. Big thing in the code world is, uh, we've got spraying, the grass is starting to grow. Notice that, uh, these numbers are for April, so next month, we'll probably skyhawk it. Uh, animal welfare is, uh, going steady, our animal welfare officers actually did a pretty good job. Homing some panels, and, uh, we're ready to take off under issues and concerns, at capacity, uh, there for our shelter. Uh, on the building side, we've got quite a bit of construction going on. Uh, we opened, uh, our wall bar, our harbor freights, soft open, so they'll be good to go here in a bit. New bicycle shop, uh, there, and shops on the way. Uh, there's board footings for the safety jeans, uh, twelve thousand square foot, or the childhood development center. Uh, we've got a pad over here, uh, for the, uh, Leon dentistry office. You go down in Cassidy's, uh, building, that's seventy-five hundred square foot, add it on to the north side of the gym for their workout facility, that will, uh, will actually be able to do workouts during the summer, and then the open floor, uh, next school year.
So that would explain all the damage.
That's probably, that probably explains the view, yes. Brie of coffee, coffee going out, so that's a good one, too. Brings are still going strong, but like I said, grass is ramping up, and coat guys are right there on that.
Anybody doesn't know, uh, Harbor Freights now, and I told you, I showed you the other day, it's big, it's big, and I thought Tuesday morning, used to be there, I couldn't believe I'd be there. Harbor Freights got a big, big exposure there, so, um, the brush is really good, so. Having Harbor Freights been walking distance in the house, like, the villagers are going to see a sales tax like this. Yeah, they may need this up there.
Kevin, send off our work.
Kevin, so you got to know, um, we had the litter blitz on April twentieth, I think some of you guys are up there, John, and stuff like that. Uh, it went really well, uh, we were able to pick up about ten bags of trash coming down from White River Lee to Pennsylvania on Bridge Road. Uh, yeah, White River Lee to Pennsylvania. Uh, we don't really have a lot of issues going on right now. Uh, May, they're starting to have a few issues with mowing and everything else. Recently, we've been dealing with some drainage issues over and on, uh, White Haven, some issues, we use stuff like that, so we're going to clean up a lot of that mess up. Uh, trying to keep up with civic laws, the grass decided to be red. That's really all we have, but speaking of jobs, we have two positions open for Public Works. Feel free to apply online.
What are those positions?
Uh, they're two entry-level, public works commission positions.
I have one. Uh, pretty much just cooperating for us, uh, responding to calls. We had a promotion exam last month, we were able to promote a major, uh, captain and two lieutenants, uh, so that was exciting for our guys to be able to promote and get them positions. Working on changing out our record management system, so that's been a process, and just training a lot, trying to provide the best service. That was a good day, we, uh, had three days of, uh, interdepartmental training in Nicholas Hills, um, this was covered day-day training for whenever one of our firefighters shoot down, responding to those calls, and just a couple of our promotions.
One thing that I remember for the police department, park, for, we're, uh, the county police fire softball game coming up in June, towards end of June, uh, going to go towards the Special Olympics, um, so we're going into that, uh, June twenty ninth. Is that right? June twenty ninth, there's a Special Olympics softball game, our first police park.
Did you watch the score last year?
I don't remember, be honest with you. We're going to get all money here, but, uh.
And what's the time?
I'm trying to, yeah, we'll get it figured out, we have a lot of hours, we can support the Special Olympics. What, how, like that?
I believe it's, uh, Cassidy School at ten o'clock on that day. Boo shucks and, uh, fire department, we out, spray in, and we really did our best, made it as attractive as possible to get, get people involved.
And that is June twenty ninth?
Yes, ma'am.
We'll post more on our Facebook pages as well, promoting more social.
Is it now, the turnus?
I don't have a whole lot of new moves by the fact that, because it was here last. Welcome to the council, another four of the Eagles, uh, so I had, I think, their opening litigation was crossing, getting motion for the last one and a half since the position dropped up. Trying to be sophisticated for the parties, so I can escape that probably being happy in the middle of the show. Also, our firm will be hiring, uh, a fourth attorney, uh, so you can try to remember the list. She's retired from law practice, uh, it's younger last year, until we leave now. Turning for a year and, uh, also, also, looking forward to release, uh, coming by. You know, new department hired is Catherine Long, which is.
The experience.
All right, and council member comments? Did she have that?
Um, I'll just say, thank you all very much for your, uh, support for the election, I appreciate votes for us. Um, we're working for the city of the village, and good question, I think, I appreciate that Sunny and Charlotte's committed to the council voice.
I just want to say, we were proud to have you guys, I don't think it's a pity, if you guys voted for us, and really, really new to, to our group, and that's you, thank you.
No, it's not, you're going to be, that's just me.
Um, so we're looking forward to working with you all, which would be great, I suspect.
Congratulations.
I just want to say, I'm, I'm glad to be here, and thank you everybody for coming out and voting and supporting, and I'm here to do and represent all of you, so I'm excited to do that. John and I also got the opportunity to go to a O-MAG class.
John and I also got the opportunity to go to a OMA class the other day, it was very important and very, it's great. Learned that I didn't know anything. Anyways, please go for a good chance to make anything or whatnot, I'm here to support you guys.
For the board and for the family?
Yes.
And welcome. Thank you. It is very, I actually met both of you all when I was camping. Pretty much, actual residents is knocking on your doors, but I welcome you, I'm happy to work with you. I am looking forward to the work that we're going to do together. I do want to say, I want to say thank you to my family that came out tonight. My mom, Sololas Culture Flowers, my daughter, Sololas Moore, my sister, Sonny Pudel, and my dad, Claire's Culture. They're here tonight supporting me because I didn't know if I was going to have an actual swearing man around. And one of my residents in my ward had called me. I hadn't, I don't want to tell too personal situation, but I was able to assist that one of my ward members and getting in contact with a family member that is in this, in a system. And so she didn't know which way to turn. Reached out to me for the first time. I think I learned that pretty much from my mother, just being really proactive about asking who are the wrong channels to get to people. And so I was able, for the first time in my past, in official capacity, able to help someone make that kind of contact. And made me feel, especially because they, they actually made me within because I got involved. And then I screenshot all of our other reps for the state, all the way up to DC. And I said, call until you get some action, twenty, within twenty-four hours, thirty, thirty-two hours, I'll come home with this person. So I thank you, Mrs. Anderson, I think that she will forgive me. And I, otherwise, I do appreciate, Sean told me before he left on the key. That like to go over that when I ran office, not understanding, not even knowing when I ran for office, that it would be the first person, first person of color to be a councilman. For me to be the first person of color woman to be the vice mayor of the city of the village. I don't take it lightly. I am grateful for the opportunity. And I am proud to not only be a resident in the village for over thirty years, but now representing the movement in this way makes me extremely happy. So thank you and I'll throw it to your ladies fast. I'm long hearing this one anymore because when David gets back. Something, Valda asked me, if I was, you know, like, of course I do. This will be my opportunity that I have. David does represent us on some communities that sometimes is not at the home, so I'll give him the same. Otherwise, are there any other comments? So. This meeting is adjourned.